All right, call the meeting to order. You want to do a roll?
Okay. John F. Moon?
Yeah.
Scott Patrick?
Yep.
Sarah Pimple?
Here.
Mike Finnis?
Yes.
Betsy Harding?
Betsy had surgery, she's not here.
Ray Adler? David Quintero?
Yep.
Mark Mallett? Larry Sumner, let me know. Aaron Levitt? George Howard?
Here.
Dick Dunne.
Yes.
So I guess just for the purpose of the voting, since Betsy isn't here, it would be fine for George. And Ray's letter of resignation, when would that take effect?
Probably not yet. Whenever. Did you just get it?
Received on January 28. Whether Dick votes for Ray or not is what I was asking.
Well, he's not here in any case.
Well, I didn't know if Ray had resigned, whether Dick would still be voting for him. That's the question.
Oh, I see your question. I don't know.
If it's any precedent, the ZPA, when it had only four permanent members, you'd have to vote until the second, fill the open position.
Okay.
The other reason why I think you'd want to do it is, I don't know if the fireworks, as I said with the ZPA, which has five people, you need an affirmative vote of three to pass anything. If there are only three members present, you need to, you'd have to vote. So if we have less than seven people voting.
Four still have to carry.
Somebody at the applicant, you know, subdivision would be at potential status of, you know, leading, you know, four out of six rather than four out of seven.
Okay, well, you'll be voting tonight, Dick, and then I can always just double check too, if there's some reason why that shouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, it should.
All right, so first thing, there's copies of the minutes here. Public hearing, did you need a copy, Dick? And there's also copies of the, this is for the third. We'll start with the third.
Get those, Dave.
Are there motion to approve?
Some of them.
Any questions, comments, edits? They accept any minutes from January 3rd?
No.
And opposed? All right, the 17th? I hope you've all read them already.
Yeah.
Motion to approve? Or do I discuss first? Any?
I move to approve.
Any comments, second? Any comments, questions? Dick? Okay, all in favor?
No.
Any opposed? First item, is there any public comment that's not on the agenda tonight?
Just a quick question, asking if in the future, you can have a plan, your planning board meetings, so they're not running the same night as the select meetings?
A lot of the scheduling over the past month or so has been somewhat dictated by public hearings and when they had to occur, notices, and what time we had available. This is the last date for a public hearing, so we've had more planning board meetings than I think we wanted to in the last month and a half, so I apologize for any. Any other comments? Okay, so we'll be opening the first public hearing tonight, which is on a proposed subdivision. Tony?
Good evening. Yeah? I think you've seen this plan before. It's just a little writing. Want you to know that we've been successful in getting over the 42.18, 128 is to land trust. So that's, that's.
Do I go through the checklist first? Go ahead and turn it on.
Since we have a lot of people in the audience, will you tell us what this is about?
Sure. This is a proposed three lot subdivision. It's Eagle Mountain?
Eagle Mountain Road.
Eagle Mountain Road.
That's attached to Adams Road as well.
Okay. This is a sort of a second phase to a, to a lot line adjustment that we did a couple of meetings ago, I think at the December meeting. And the intent of the lot line adjustment was so that Mr. Simone could give part of the land to the Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. And he's now looking to subdivide the remaining land into three, build a lots. So we'll go through the checklist.
Cool, thank you. Okay. Application subdivision requirements, proof of all, applicable fees paid in full.
We have that.
Five print copies of subdivision plots, prints at 24 by 36. One Mylar copy of the subdivision plot.
Yes, we have that.
Location map clearly showing centered lot location and adjustment. Named roads.
Yep.
Clearly showing, yes. Name of proposed subdivision or identifying title.
Yep.
Name and address of all owners of property to be subdivided should match owner names on separate butter list.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. It's, it's part of the, it's attached to the checklist.
There's 19 of them. Okay, I've got on the butter list. You want me to?
Want you to.
Okay, Kirk? Eddie? Elizabeth M. R12, what, 57?
You know where they are, Tony?
They're all, they're there. I might tell her an argument for this. I don't know if she. How many did we send out, Ella? Seventeen.
Yeah, we're just looking for them on the map itself. What was the name again?
It was Lot 57, which isn't, isn't indicated on the map. 56. 55, 56. Maybe it's this. Because the abutters between the lot.
If it's indicated by the next one, Diane Fermold, I know is across Route 16.
So you're not a butter?
Not a butter anymore. Because of length of lot. If you look at this, maybe a butter right here is the Saco Valley Trust.
That comes all the way down?
No, all the way to 16.
Okay.
So you have nothing on that side anymore. All you have is the one abutting Eagle Mountain Road and Adams Road, and as you can see, that long line on the far side.
So do you know is 57 across the street, or do you know?
You might have even.
So.
Lot 57? You might have notified more people than we needed to.
Maybe we should do it the other way.
Let's do it the other way around. You've got the Upper Valley Saco Land Trust.
Yeah.
On your abutter list there. Which is R12, 56.
55, 50.
I got these from, oh, I was sorry. I have to. I suppose they're all there.
I don't have them.
They're not on that list.
No. 57, 59, 60, 28.
You don't think you notified Ella?
For service.
What's the address? Is there an address?
55, Box Number 10. Not 47.
Why don't you keep going? I got to hear.
The last one first.
The last one.
Okay, now, you want me to run down the abutters?
That might be easier for us, since we've got more on your list than are true abutters. You wanted Sean Doucette, the local trust.
I did have Sean.
Okay.
And I do have him.
Okay. Then it's, it's like eight Adams Road LLC.
R12.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So that's L9.
7, 8, 9, and?
8, yeah, Adams Road.
Okay, then Donald and Pauline Mason. Now, were you considering a butter up here across the road?
No.
It's just.
I think we did, I think we did know it.
What's the?
We did.
Lot number 6. Here.
We heard on the circuit.
Yep.
Adams Road 6.
Yep, I got them.
Donald and Pauline.
Yep.
And the Gozarski?
Five.
Five?
Yes.
And four is Paul and Sherry, Michelle.
Yes.
And three is Harding.
A Carty.
Two is Roboshad.
Roboshad.
One is Bradley.
Bradley.
Okay, and that'd be it.
Okay, name and address, yes. All right. Tax map and lot number of the lot to be subdivided.
Lot 51, 55, 123. So the R, all of this is all on R12?
R12. E911, address proposed lot, if available.
Yes.
I have an NA on that, probably hasn't been designated.
Right, it hasn't, I don't think it gets assigned until the lot exists.
Right. Abutters names, tax map, and lot numbers matching separate abutter list.
Yes, correct.
We did that. Name of zoning districts.
Yep.
Where a lot to be subdivided is located. Square feet and acreage of lot to be subdivided in of each proposed lot.
Yep.
Okay, minimum zoning frontage requirements.
400.
47.
There we go.
Got it. Plat scale at 1 inch to 100 feet or better. North arrow.
Supersollet.
A handsome. Plan date?
Yes.
Surveyor certification statement, may certify, including name, license number, address, seal, and signature.
Yep.
Seal of engineer or engineering sheets, not applicable.
Correct.
Nothing happening. Name, address, and who said that? Proposed tax map and lot numbers for all newly created lots.
Yes.
Boundary survey, including bearings and distances for all lot lines, both current and proposed, show entire parcel being subdivided. Here we are. I think they're all there. Okay?
Yep.
Existing and proposed topographic contours at 5-foot intervals or better. All zoning ordinance setback lines, building setbacks, year-round streams, et cetera.
It's just a, this is a year-round stream flowing through the property. The setback shown, I think, is from the property lines and is ignoring the stream. Is that, and the stream isn't a property boundary, so I suppose that then does not apply. I think you can ignore that. I would prefer to the setback from our industry that is a property boundary.
So we're good. Soil map, clearly indicating soil types and soil boundaries with poor and very poorly drained, hydric soils.
No, it just doesn't fit down. Soils would be the remains. I think, I think we're okay.
Soils, minimum lot size chart demonstrating that each proposed lot meets zoning minimum lot size requirements, state minimums, lot size on that.
Yes, chart is there.
Okay, floodplain land, if applicable, clearly demarcated.
I think we're far enough uphill.
Don't have any.
That's right.
Surface water, clearly identified and delineated.
I assume that's the stream.
Yeah.
It's this running down through here.
I think so.
Seems to be, where's this marked? Good? Existing buildings and other human-made objects remaining.
There are no buildings on the?
We have none.
The lots on it to be subdivided?
All existing or proposed easements, right-of-ways buildings, other, and other essential site features such as rock wedges, stone walls, and tree lines, if applicable.
Well, there is on the note 8, it refers to an access easement.
It's noted there.
Yeah, I don't really notice that before, but since that's a driveway serving two lots, do we need, I guess it's a driveway and not a private road, so we need no legend indicating that the town is not responsible?
As long as it's a driveway, yeah.
I'm sorry?
If it's a driveway, then it's.
Serving two or.
So I mean, I'm not suggesting it isn't.
Question.
I'm asking a question. This would appear to be a driveway and not a private road.
That's what it's indicated in.
Other than the general requirement it be built to our standards, there's nothing that needs to be done on the subdivision. Is that accurate?
I think so.
Open space to be preserved, not applicable. Deep restrictions, if any, copy of deed and statement indicating no knowledge of deep restrictions may be substituted. Number nine? No, no trailer.
It seems it's not, five, the deed restrictions, number nine.
Okay, they're listed.
Doesn't look like any of these deed restrictions has to do with items that we are concerned about with the subdivision.
No, they're about painting and trailers.
About what you do on the lot after it's.
Location of existing and proposed water supplies within 200 feet of the lot to be subdivided. subdivided. Should protect the ready eye. I think I saw the others.
They seem to be on the map, and the only one that encroaches on the lot is lot arc 12-6, encroaching just on the very small piece of 55-1, which. Is he supposed to get an easement for that?
Well, it looks like it's always been there.
It's always been there, yeah, because this is not.
Right, they haven't changed that line.
Right.
So it's of record. We're ahead.
I guess so.
Location of existing and proposed sewers and septic systems within 200 feet of the involved lots.
The only one is up here on lot number three, so I have a septic approval already on it. Which is attached to the folder.
You're talking about the square on 55-1?
Yes, yeah. That's the only one on there.
It would be within 200 feet, is it?
Mm-hmm.
On the checklist, are we supposed, is it, yeah, flat, supposed to have the septic systems on, just on the proposed lot or?
Just on the proposed lot from what we have.
Yes, location of existing and proposed sewers and septic systems within 200 feet of the involved lots.
Okay, within 200 feet, so septic systems of these lots, one through five. It looks like there's houses on.
Yup.
Three of them.
There's houses on one, two and three, nothing on four and five. And, you know, they've been there. Nothing much we can do about that. The, you know, the one that I think we're referring to is lot number three, it's an up proposed, I'm sorry, lot number one, where there's a septic system already designed and approved on that, on that site. I have it in the folder that Scott has.
This is your lot number one?
Yup.
We're calling it 55-1?
Yup.
So should those lots have septic systems shown?
I don't know.
Well, let's see, three of them have houses, so they must have some septic.
And if you notice where the houses are, the septic systems are within, and if they were 200 feet, it's one inch to, one inch equals 100 feet, it's.
They have to be adjacent to those houses.
They have to be, they have to be. Actually, some of them on the side of them, but.
So are we saying that their septic's are more than 200 feet?
No, they're not.
No?
They're within 200. Probably.
You have a rule, I think you'll say 200 feet.
Well, those three lots are less than 200 feet across. 153, 144 and 146. Where they are. Who knows? But I don't think they're within 200 feet of the, of the new subdivided lot.
Right.
So I don't think it would be applied, I think they're outside of that 200 feet. Yeah, I guess because the houses are all more than 200 feet.
And that's what I was asking for, are they more than 200 feet from?
To the back of the lot. Arc 12 looks a little closer to the property line, so, you know, it depends on where those houses have a septic system.
Normally, they put a septic system between five, 15 feet of the house.
Right, the tank is usually 15 and then.
The bed.
Thirty or forty foot leach field. Well, we'd have to go back and see if they were, had plans.
Had we, right.
In the office for these lots, I mean, it's hard to say if that even exists. How, and like.
But those houses up there, they gotta be leased in the 20th, 30th year. Been there as long as I own the land almost. That's 40 years.
Is the requirement there, if anything, within 200 feet of the lot?
I think the requirement is that they be shown if they're within 200 feet of the involved lots, and so if they're within 200 feet, then they don't need to be shown.
That would, from what kind of.
I guess I would say that the evidence would suggest that they're probably.
Notice the survey was out there checking that.
Well, they've all got their wells behind the house, in between what would be the closest to the lot.
Right, septic will be on either side.
I would think so.
I would think so.
So you have the 75-foot radius from the well, and I would put the septic system away from the well, so I would say the septic systems were all in front of them, or on the roadside of the houses. It's a guess. If they've got the septic systems out in the well, that's their problem.
I'm going to accept.
I think it's all right, I mean, I can't believe that these folks would have put a septic system out towards their well. Haven't we given that up? Engineering sheets showing location and details of existing and proposed water supplies and mains. We've got well radiuses for the existing, I don't think we have any water supply up there.
No, it's just locations for proposed wells, I assume they haven't been dug yet.
On the proposed lots?
Yes.
It's a proposed well with a 75-foot radius there. I have one down here, and there's nothing around it.
Yeah, there's a radius around each of them.
Okay. Engineering sheet showing location and details of existing and proposed sewers and septic, did I say that already? No, it's the second. Engineering sheet showing location and details of existing and proposed sewers and septic systems with, within 200 feet of the lot to be subdivided. Did I just go? Yeah, 28 and 30 seem to be the same thing.
One is showing the location and the other is the engineering sheets, but we don't know the engineering sheets.
Oh, okay, sorry. Engineering sheet showing location and details of existing and proposed stormwater surface drainage.
Well, there's no engineering sheets.
Engineering sheets showing location and details of existing and proposed erosion and sedimentation controls. Haven't got any.
No, we haven't got engineering sheets.
I haven't had to. Location of all test pits and percolation tests.
Yes.
Have some of those.
Three test pits and.
Yes. Okay, engineering sheet showing location and details of all proposed streets and driveways, including right-of-way widths, road profiles and cross-sections. That's not applicable, short. Statement of responsibility and liability for the private streets and roads. Okay, subdivision regulation compliance statement. That should be on this sheet here.
It's at the bottom.
Actually, it's note number two.
Is that, where does this stand?
That statement is, that's a surveyor. And the subdivision regulation statement is note number two.
Unless we stepped in there. Okay, now, non-plat data to be submitted. Copy of State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services subdivision certification sheet and approval number. Place state number as item eight on page one of subdivision application. State of New Hampshire, yes, I have that, lot three has septic and wetlands permit number 2011-01344 from Yorkland Services.
Okay.
Copy of State Wetlands Board Certification and Approval Number if applicable. We have that. Is that in here?
It should be attached, if not, I have it.
Oh, I see one right there. You see it, it's in there.
No, it's probably, it's probably.
You have it. You've got it.
Yeah, right there. It's, uh, it should be, it's in there somewhere, I'm sure. If you need a number, permit number?
Yeah, they asked for a number.
It's in there. Yeah, same as it.
Okay, and then we have a copy of state highway access permit if applicable, NA. Open space dedication documents if applicable. No. Uh, open space dedication, oh, I said that one already, sorry. Condominium and homeowner association documents. If electric lines and other utilities are to be installed, a letter of intent from the corporation, utility or municipal department during the installation. Whatever's there for these houses, I'm sure is.
And there's a note about easement reserved down the corner for the.
Easement reserved with a power company in New England telephone for utility lines, said right-of-way not to exceed 50 feet. Deed of Jackson Associates. So is that a check or a, no, it's a check. Let's see, uh, 30-foot access easement for subdivisions with frontage or access to surface waters. Engineering calculations related to any proposed drainage ways. Let's see, any? None proposed. That brings us to the end of the checklist.
Do we have a motion to accept the application as complete?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion about the application? We're all pretty familiar with it already, last time, right? Any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the subdivision application?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay.
What happens next?
Sign it? Sign it? All the copies.
We accepted the application. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to approve this application?
So.
We have a second. So, all in favor of approving this application, accepted an application. Any opposed? Sorry about that, I wondered why you all.
What's the next, next?
Well, I'll be, I'll get all the, the miler signed, sent off to the registry, be signed and sent off to the model group.
So we're good?
We're good.
Forty-two years. Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it for what time.
All right, so that concludes that public hearing, so we're now going to have a public hearing on the Route 16 citizens petition. This, I'll read it right off the agenda, this petition submitted by the citizens of Jackson asking for amendments. This petition submitted by the citizens of Jackson asking for amendments to Jackson zoning map and zoning ordinance to change the zoning district within 500 feet on either side of Route sixteen north of Eagle Mountain Road from village district to a rural residential district. And so now I'll open it up to public comment.
Well, I think it should be in the village district because people have their living map, you're gonna devalue the... Because you're changing it from commercial to residential. And we have very little commercial in town anyways, and I don't think you're gonna have horrendous, you've got a river on one side, nothing down on the other side.
And we've, um, the board has actually looked at this issue in the past.
Before.
Before, yep. And those were the, you know, certainly that was part of the discussion then, that Route sixteen does not lend itself to commercial development. And that also, given that Jackson has a very limited amount of area available for commercial development, you know, should, um, should that little potential be removed from what's available? Any other?
The citizens of Jackson made the petition. Could we hear from one of those citizens, why you wanna do this?
Is there anybody that would like to?
Well, I can start with Tom. I've been... This is something that was called for in the master plan, that the town, the town mayor, the landlord mayor, based on comment and surveys from the town and a variety of meetings. That's the last time we adopted the master plan and... We've carried before, so it's been in the master plan for some time. My understanding of why it's in the master plan was a desire to avoid strict development north of the village. And to concentrate commercial development happens in the village district. Put more planning, try to avoid or set in common. As a resident of the area, effective, I prefer to see it stay residential and not have commercial development in north sixteen, on north sixteen. That's really, you know, my primary reason I support this is both out of sense of duty to try to implement the master plan, as well as a preference to see development happen in town rather along with sixteen.
I guess, I don't have strong feelings either way, frankly, because I probably won't be around too much longer. But, uh, but I guess I take issue with the last statement that you made. You'd rather see it develop in a concentrated town. I think what makes Jackson beautiful, a nice town, nice place to live, is the open space that's in the town. I would entertain some sort of zoning that said that the Wentworth Golf Course always has to be a golf course, because that really makes the town. And as far as the expansion of commercial development from Jackson north to beyond Bayonne Place, it's been what? You know, it's been a long time. And gee, as long as I've lived here, I've been here since nineteen seventy-four, and I can't say that there's been any. So, you know, I'm not sure what you're afraid of. I guess, as far as what I would expect and might actually like to see, would be something like the Appalachian Mountain Club function lodging on, say, the Hurland property, which is about the only one that has any space in the area that we're talking about. You know, I can see rural lodging establishments up Route sixteen, and I'd rather have them there than have the Wentworth Golf Course split up. So that's just my comment. As I say, I don't have strong feelings either way. I'm happy to go the way the people of the town want to go. But I certainly wouldn't do something just because it happened to be in the master plan that was put forth probably in nineteen seventy-four, or, you know, back in that era. I think it's, I think you should rethink it, and as you're on, you have, you've thought about it, you lived there, you'd like to see it residential. But I, I just don't see, you know, I don't think you're gonna see a car wash or gas stations or the Marriott going in, you know? You might see some mountain resort lodging somewhere along there, and to me, that would be a good thing.
Sixty-three, Dan Hurst.
Thank you. You can't have a Mickey D.
Does this, I'm not quite familiar with process, does this board decide tonight based on this comment?
Because this is a citizens petition, we, the board, don't decide whether it goes on the ballot, nor can we make any changes to it. What we'll be doing, I would assume at the end of the meeting tonight, is simply voting to recommend or to not recommend it, just the amendment. But it will go on the ballot in either case.
And then it will go on the ballot?
Yep. It'll show the vote by the planning board whether to recommend or to not recommend.
Jeff, for what's worse, I would support an amendment to our zoning ordinance that admits, you know, lodging facilities of some sort throughout the residential district in town. And I don't, I don't believe they should be limited just to the village district, even though that is of current... Certainly, there should be more. I would sort of support, you know, further development, lodging up, you know, in Carr Ranch Road, for example. There would be one other obvious place, aside from Route sixteen. So I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that's not something I see as, as a, as something that's in the town interest.
Well, I gave my opinion as to how I see it, and you've given yours, and I would be interested, anyone else that signed that position petition, I'd like to hear from them.
My name's Jack, I'm with Frank Bennett, a resident of that area, so naturally I speak with some preference on it. It seems to me that the fact that major commercial development is unlikely, given the floodplain on one side and the hills on the other, is not really an argument for doing, for changing the zoning or not. It simply makes the zoning natural in that area, that it would be kept available for housing, but not for major commercial purposes. As to the development of, you know, an ANC type of housing, that as a private organization would, I'm not sure how that would fit as a commercial entity versus not. That probably is unoffensive. You spoke movingly about the beauty of Jackson, and I agree with you, but part of that, to me, is continuing the sense of nature and wildness as you go up sixteen. And I'd hate to see a loud big signs and a lot of commercial development there. I'd much rather see that kept for quiet residential purpose.
I'm also a neighbor of both Jack and Frank's, and...
I mean, just...
I'm sorry?
Angela Maynard. Angela, I'm sorry. Maybe others also.
But I would echo Jack's comments about keeping it residential, because that's the beauty of why we live there and why we've been there for nearly thirty years, not as long as Jeff, of course, but I don't see any need to change it. I would prefer, well, I would prefer to see it residential and not allow commercial to be quit. My name's Jim Lukowitz. If you just seem curious, but there's no one here that signed a petition to do this, that's speaking in favor of it?
No, Jack signed it, no, he signed it.
Okay, to keep it residential?
To change it to residential.
To change it, excuse me, I'm sorry, to change it to residential.
So we only have two types of zoning in Jackson, rural residential and village district, is my understanding. And the per acre requirements used to be one acre per dwelling unit in the village district and two acres per dwelling, just for dwelling unit in the rural residential. And I know that's been changed because of the soils-based zoning. What exactly is allowable commercially in the village district?
Restaurants, professional, commercial businesses, lodging houses, private and charitable facilities, and then what's not permitted are amusement parks, casino gambling, water slides, facilities for tenting and trellis, businesses engaged in sale or lease for prepared foods for consumption outside the building, and businesses whose inventory is for resale or lease of petroleum products in the right vehicles, other gas stations and dealers. All that's permitted in village, but in the residential district, you're largely limited to single and multifamily and cluster residential and accessory apartments.
And there are some, some sort of business enterprises that are allowable in the rural residential?
Yeah, if there are less three-year...
Home occupations, yeah.
Right, three-year...
And farms, and the Jackson Historical Society, or museum.
So what you're saying is you want to, this is the proposals to change into a rural residential?
Correct. Currently, within 500 feet of the center line of Route sixteen is considered...
Okay, and all the businesses that Frank mentioned, that were not permitted in the village district?
Mm-hmm.
And he also named all the business enterprises that would be permitted in the village district. And there weren't very many, Frank, how many were there? Four or five, I think, that were actually permitted? And how many more were not permitted?
In, within the village district, I mean?
I mean, we're talking about a handful one way or the other, right?
And I think, at least in previous discussions, it was, I mean, I think there's some concern over specific types of businesses, but if I remember correctly, the larger concern was not a particular type of business, but having a, like a little strip mall sort of thing, you know, where you had four or five different businesses in a single...
Cluster. Cluster. And from the discussion I've heard so far, it doesn't seem like it would be practical or even feasible to design that type of a business on either side of Route sixteen.
I guess I would disagree. I mean, for example, you have the monotonic analysis, which is essentially a failed timeshare that's eventually gonna get redeveloped. That might be a very attractive location for a small... Somebody, I think it's a lousy look, I mean, I think it's, technically, I think it would be a very poor investment, but there's a lot of places where people have built commercial activity that were poor investments, but they still go ahead and build them. That's one location that, you know, certainly would be feasible.
And then the...
And, you know, certainly, let's not underestimate what somebody can do in the next decade.
Right.
So, I mean, there are locations, I, you know, I agree that there's not much anything to happen in the next ten, fifteen years. I'm looking at this more than fifty-year or longer time. But the economy used to be like fifty years ago.
And in previous discussions, again...
It's a floodplain, I mean, you have convoys of...
Well, and in previous discussions, again, it was pointed out both that in terms of available land, it's limited, but there are probably some few locations that would be possible. But the other argument, too, was that, and Frank sort of alluded to that, to this, is that it just would not make a lot of sense to, you know, business sense to locate a business that requires, you know, drive-in traffic.
Right. Well, I'm just, I'm just curious as to, you know, regarding the concerns of the people that actually own property, and I'm seeing that a lot of people that have owned property that are living long will be affected by it, versus the ones that have spoken up for and against it. I mean, I don't see many from either side here, a few.
Can I ask one?
I'm sorry.
My name's Joe Gage.
I think probably, looking at the audience, I'd say close to fifty percent of the population that lives in that area are in the financial sector.
You stand by gas station.
May I read from the...
How far north are we talking as this goes? On sixteen?
Just from Eagle Mountain Road north all the way to the, to the boundary of the town.
Well, if you look at just the flavor of the people here, my wife and I would definitely like it to change to residential. As you've said, it's amazing what people can do if they have an idea, and do an awful lot of...
Sorry? I apologize, she doesn't know your name.
I have non-shepherd.
Dick, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna read from the master plan. Two thousand and one sixty-three of the two thousand and one community survey respondents favored rezoning. So, this is sixty-three responders, so I'm sure there could be more, but I don't think that's a mandate to change the zoning.
In the back of the master plan, I think it indicates that there are about three hundred and something respondents total.
Okay.
So I'm assuming it's sixty-three of the...
So sixty-three of those responders felt that way. And I'm sure that a number of them live right up in the area and would be concerned with that. So, you know, you're certainly gonna vote your neighborhood, but I don't think that there's a mandate within the master plan for this.
Doesn't the master plan state that they shouldn't rezonate?
It states that sixty-three respondents felt that way.
Sixty, and who and how many?
Sixty-three of the two thousand and one community survey respondents favored rezoning.
And how many did that favor not rezoning?
As best we can tell, if you go to the back of the master plan, there's in the introduction, it says, "In all, three hundred and eighty-seven questionnaires were returned by the closing date."
And how many responded to that question?
Hundred and seventy-five were from year-round residents and two hundred and... Hundred and seventy-five were from year-round residents and two hundred were from seasonal residential.
I mean, all I can think, say, is that the planning board at that time, after looking at the more detailed results of that survey and the open meetings that happened prior to the adoption of master plan, I assume felt that was the rule of the town to put that in the master plan. Like, it's hard to imagine that they put in the master plan against the wishes of the town.
When was that, just give me, when was that master plan question asked?
Two thousand one.
And then the plan came out in two thousand and three. Put our name on it.
I know, I was going to say, I think I worked on that point.
Yeah.
Yeah. My, if I recall correctly, it was more of a discussion.
Yeah.
A roundtable discussion. There wasn't a lot of input, but I felt at the time when we were talking about it, it came really outside of the group. Maybe some people brought thoughts to the discussion. But, you know, there weren't people that were petitioning us directly for, we were given, we were working on the master plan that was, I think it was the, whatever the earlier one was, two thousand and seventy-four, seventy-eight or eight.
We've done pretty much every ten years.
Every ten years, so it was ten years before that.
Right, we had the eighty-eight.
I think that was...
One before that I had.
So, and my understanding was that the master plan is a guide. It's none more than that. It's simply, it's something to refer back to. It's not a mandate in any way, shape, or form, other than, you know, it's just a, it's a, it's a piece that's to refer, to refer to. So I don't think you can infer probably a number, you know, such as a sixty-three people responded. There's no way of knowing how many responded against it. It's just a, it's a number with, you know, way to really understand how people did actually respond completely. So I think that's, you know, I just want to say in all fairness, that's, that's, that's the way I would remember it.
What would it take, I'm asking, even here, if, if, if we wanted to create a, I don't know, either an overlay over that area or a new district that would be more restrictive than the village district, but still allow certain types of businesses and have these or something like that?
Well, what would be allowed? As I said, I'd be in favor of setting up lodge aid establishments of some sort everywhere in the town. Maybe by, maybe in some cases by special permit. But to me, that, but I'm not sure, what else would you think could be allowed there?
You know, what about a business that is sort of mostly office activity?
I would prefer not to see that there. This is Jeff's reason to ask.
Okay, to answer the question, I guess if some person wanted to come in and build a lodge like the damn place, Thornhill Lodge, Christmas Farm Inn, of that caliber, I guess I'd rather have them build it along Route sixteen north of Egle Mountain Road than if Mallett decided to sell the golf course and split it up into a whole bunch of lodging properties and condominiums. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, Jeff, I would agree. I would, I, I mean, I admit you're, I think, addressing two separate issues. I think...
I am, but I think they're tied together.
I guess I disagree. I mean, yeah, I think the floodplain situation along the golf course would substantially limit what kind of development could happen there. And, you know, if you, if you believe that there should be further restrictions on the density in the village district, or at least the village, let's say, we should bring it to the planning board or let's talk about it. I mean, I, and as I said earlier, I'm unhappy personally with the aspect of our facility ordinance that limits lodging establishments just to the village district. That would be, I think that would be that, for example, you couldn't build the Egle Mountain Lodge, or kind of notch in these days. I think that'd be a shame. So I think that's, or Thornhill, yeah. I'm suppo, I think that's the, if anything else, that's the economic basis of town. We...
If there's a way that you could do that, that would be great. I mean, it appears the majority of my neighbors would like this changed to residential. And so since that's the majority, I support that. That's funny. But I do think, I just like to make that point about why Jackson is so beautiful. It's the open spaces, it's the golf course, it's the park that make it a great place to live, along with, of course, the natural features that we have no control over the mountains surrounding the village. End of story. I'm done, I'm done.
Well, again, with Jeff, I mean, the reason that we're here, and I think other people, when you mention living in Jackson, they say, wow, you know, you live in Jackson, you don't live in one of the surrounding towns with all the commercial activity. And of course, our taxes probably reflect that. But I think as Frank said, it's easy to sit here and say, well, no one's ever going to do anything with that land. But, you know, look, just look around. What happens is land gets tighter and tighter and tighter. It gets more and more expensive and people think of more and more creative ways to ruin it. And I think to leave a residential, which can be changed at some later date if the town decides that, but it's part of, part of a long-term plan. And I think that's what makes living in Jackson valuable.
I have to say, I'm personally sort of on the fence on this issue because I, you know, I certainly value that, the natural landscape and really value the fact that I live in a house where I can see almost no other structures. So I'm entirely sympathetic. But, you know, I guess the concern I have personally is that, you know, Jackson is a great place, not just because of the way it looks, but also because of the community here. And, you know, between, you know, issues like the lack of affordable housing or, you know, workforce housing, you know, my concern is that as we lose businesses in town, as we lose the opportunity for families to move into town, we start, that, that community part of the town starts to degrade. You know, I guess, in, for this particular issue, my, my concern is just we have so limited area available for any kind of commercial development that losing any of it, albeit again, land that doesn't represent a great deal of potential, but losing any of it, given how little we have, is still, I think, significant. So that's...
I just want to make one point. You know, people are talking about leaving it the same. They're not talking about leaving it the same. They're talking about changing the zoning to, from rural residential to, or from rural residential to a village district. So, you know, just for clarity. I'm sorry, the other way around. It's a change.
But I think, you know, I think what people are saying is they want it to stay the same in terms of what it is.
In order to make it stay the same, we want to make a change.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And if I, again, you know, again, personally, if I, I guess if I felt that there was, you know, a greater potential for the type of commercial development, and I think probably pretty unanimous in not wanting to see in that area, that would make some difference. But, again, I have a hard time seeing a lot of potential for that.
So let's make it residential on then?
But, again, I, you know, driving through, you know, I guess the one example I can think of is you drive through, you know, say around Stowe or Wakefield, Vermont, and still a beautiful area, very rural, but you have, you know, these sort of professional businesses here and there. And, you know, it doesn't, at least to my eyes, spoil the area in any way, but obviously must, you know, lend itself that, those type of businesses to, you know, the economies of those towns and sort of the community makeup of those towns, for what it's worth.
I would agree with you, but I'm just saying, a lot of the, you know, what determines what businesses grow in a certain area is very complicated. It's more than just, you know, it would be nice to have a copy or, you know, a baby shop or something like that as opposed to a, you know, kind of strip mall type deal where, you know, somebody's selling, you know, souvenirs. I mean, how can you, you don't know what you're going to end up with. And that's the fear, I think, that people have. And that's why, you know, people are proposing to, you know, which is kind of a...
I have a question. Could, can signs be put up there like the Town and Country sign in this area?
Interesting question. I think there's a, there's a thirty-two square feet. I'm sorry?
Eight by four.
Thirty-two. I'm sorry, I'm looking. Well, a sign is a structure. A sign is a structure. Sir? Thirty-two square feet is in this only one.
Section thirteen.
The sign is limited to just the worst of the...
I don't think there's any intention of...
So if we rezoned, it would, the sign still could be...
A new sign could put up, I believe so. I'd actually have thought of it in detail.
It's limited to thirty-two square feet exclusive of supports and shall not exceed twelve feet above the ground, natural ground level.
Yeah, I think, as far as I know, the only, that possible, remotely possible shelter in effect of this would be, you know, and even that, there's some discrimination is the, would allow the trailer that's on the property adjacent to yours to remain, whereas there's at least some argument that trailers are not permitted in the village district.
Are trailers allowed?
I have no...
Yeah, so, for my...
You're talking about somebody else?
No, I'm...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but trailers are allowed.
I think if you, if you look at the zoning, it seems to just that trailers are not allowed in the village districts. But there's some controversy over exactly how.
Yeah, it's a town mandate, it's a trailer law.
That's... Isn't that what you referred to as snow?
It's, it's...
It's a travel trailer.
Not talking about mobile homes, I'm talking about travel trailers.
The wheels off, they're going to travel.
Well, there is a mobile home right along Route sixteen.
But that's permitted. Mobile homes are okay.
But people who have a travel trailer, if they take the wheels off, that's the problem. People can have travel trailers, I assume.
I think in the village, well, I...
I don't think this really is for paying.
I mean, my parents had a travel trailer that they parked out in the parking lot when they were there in the summertime.
I don't know when it's a parked trailer or a domicile.
Well, could somebody have a, say, a mountain guiding service north of the Egle Mountain Road on Route sixteen?
If this amendment were to pass, you mean?
If it's a customary home occupation, it would be allowed.
They would need to live there. I think it's limited to three employees. If it's a guiding service, I don't know how, you know, say they had ten guides that they used. I don't know whether it's three full-time or...
I mean, you could certainly see a bunch of little buses up there, you know, boost tours to mine, boost tours to the disruption, to, I think, degrade the airways of, of... And the consensus seems to be, from what I'm hearing, no one is concerned about commercial development because of the land, the floodplain, so what's up? Why not just change it to residential? Everyone seems convinced nothing's going to happen, so let's make sure nothing does.
Well, again, from my, my own opinion is that what's least likely to happen are the types of businesses that I think most of us would prefer not to see, but I see more potential for a guiding service or, you know, a professional office building or, you know, some business like that where, I guess with a guiding service because of proximity to, you know, the terrain that would be used. But, you know, for a professional office building, just, it's an attractive place, you know, to locate something like that and it's a, you know, a good way to get employees. So I, and obviously opinions, you know, differ as to whether that type of business is acceptable or whether it does, you know, degrade the area.
I think if we, if we could see the future and know what kinds of businesses were going to be there, then it would be an easy decision. But it's not. You know, who wants to drive by and see a bunch of rafts, half-unflated, half-inflated, and, and vehicles that are unkept versus a professional office building? Chances of a professional office building up there is rather slim, I think everyone here would agree. So I think that argues to make it residential. Just my opinion. It's Jeff to say.
What are you here about the office building? I think there's too much of the chance of that.
Okay, my name's Karen Tomlin. I guess I'm kind of curious as to how people's property values would be affected changing...
Because it's commercial.
Yeah, and this kind of, is there like a percentage? Is it going to...
You move there.
If you're residential...
Pay less taxes then.
What?
Pay less taxes. That sounds appealing.
I live in the area, as do several people in the audience. I mean, I support it because I believe the kind of commercial development that I'm fearful of would depress my property value. I think for today's property values, I'd argue, I mean, the property value presumably is based on the highest and best use of that land. Right now, you know, I don't think there is much value to the, to the commercial development. So I, my view is it's not going to have any impact, actually, on our property values, it won't matter. But that's only my view and others may have their views.
Do we, do we know whether when properties are assessed, is their commercial potential is factored into assessments?
I believe that's the case. Because you're back to your highest and best values, that's what it's based on. If you have a greater return from a commercial operation, then it will be...
The point I make is nobody's going to pay more than I might right now to develop the commercial if he does it for much use right now.
I guess my question, though, is, you know, when, when a piece of property is assessed is...
I don't know how these people, I don't go around and look and associate them.
Excuse me, sir? So again, I was asking, does anyone know how the, a piece of property is assessed in the village district because of that commercial development potential versus, I mean, is there a, you know, you kind of... Does anyone have a number for...
I don't think there's any difference that I don't care, but in this area, but I could be wrong.
I don't know about right here in the village district. I know another property that I own, there is a value difference between residential and commercial.
Base rate is different between commercial and residential depending on what it is. And that's something that the assessor, Jason Paul, would best be able to answer. Commercial's on base rate from first eight percent, five thousand. Residential on... Residential on. I'm not sure what that means. Or residential.
Wait, what else? She's too strong.
And that's the, yes, thanks, I, without knowing what basis.
Did you have another question?
I just, I, I don't have land in this area, but I guess if I did and I had bought it and it was zoned commercially and then suddenly someone changed it to residential, I would be concerned and maybe upset that suddenly I couldn't do what maybe I had originally intended to do with that land. And, you know, I, I don't, you know, as much as I love seeing it the way it is now, I would be upset if someone suddenly changed that on. And I, I would argue if you, if you lived in that area and you bought a house there, you knew it was a commercial area when you bought it and, um, I don't know.
Karen Conley. I'll, I'll offer one more comment. Yeah, this is our third winter up here. We've had our place for about twenty-nine years, but it's our third winter full-time. And when I think back to Massachusetts, the towns that were most valuable to live in are not the ones that allowed commercial development, or most desirable are the ones that limit commercial development. You know, the towns of Weston, the towns of Lincoln, the towns of Concord, where you don't drive through and see the professional office buildings or the rafting places. So I think in, in the long term, in terms of a strategic plan or a master plan for the town, that's what brings value to the town, not allowing a lot of commercial development. I think that's a fallacy, that that improves the town's value and overall desirability. I would certainly, I grew up and lived in Arlington, Mass. I would certainly have rather grown up and lived in Weston or Concord or Lincoln. And I don't, I don't think there's any denying that those are the towns we don't drive through and see commercial development of any type or sort.
I guess we're, you know, we're, we're looking at a declining student population in Jackson. And so I don't know, the dynamics may be different for a town like Jackson here versus in Massachusetts, but I think that if, if we, you know, we could make Jackson a very desirable place to live in terms of property value as a measure of desirability, but is that, what kind of community is created from those that can afford, you know, that type of property? And so I guess my concern, that community concern of mine is that if, if we, if Jackson, because of the, because of property value, you know, does not have families moving in, does not have the people that work at businesses in Jackson, also living in Jackson, then I guess I, I see the potential for degradation of, of the community, even, even if the physical town, you know, remains absolutely beautiful. I still think that, you know, that, that, I guess, in my, in my, to my eye, a town without a community is, is, you know, is, is as bad as a town that's been overdeveloped commercially, like, you know, we could point North Conway.
Affordable housing is a sort of a separate issue. There's other places that, that could be done. I certainly appreciate the concern that the firemen and, and town employees should live in the town, and that's a, that's a, a problem across the country, not just in Jackson or the town of Weston or Lincoln County.
I just want to make.
Making it a residential district would allow.
I just want to make a historical reference. I remember when half a mile down the road from my house, where there's a Scandinavian log home now, I think the development is called Hutman's Heights, there was a gas station called the Last Chance Gas Station that was operated by the Guile family. They also had a rope tow there, three or four hunting and fishing captains, and Omar Guile operated his electrical, his electrician's business out of his house there. It seemed to be quite a thriving little operation. And they actually had a little store there that most gas stations had in those states, because you drove in under the canopy and Flossie had her little store, you know, sort of like Guy of Erie Hayes's place used to be on Route sixteen. But that's all gone now and nobody sees it, but it did used to be there. Until Flossie moved down to the village.
Is, is the concern regarding commercial development, any incidence of, of development? Or is, or is the concern a more of a collective development, that once it starts, it'll grow and grow and grow?
Well, for me, it's the type of development. I mean, I didn't realize that was a gas station, so it's, that's kind of flat land now, you know, somebody might decide to put a gas station, a convenience.
Well, it's not allowed, they've sold.
No more gas stations are allowed.
Not permitted.
We used to have five gas stations in town, right beside the covered bridge was the gully.
I guess my question is, if, say, we had a crystal ball and we could say, okay, in five years from now, a single new souvenir shop or, you know, something kind of like a gas station, but since we don't allow gas stations, but that, that sort of business. But we could also look a hundred years from now and that, for whatever reason, remains the only business that gets set up there. Would that single business be, represent a significant degradation of, of that area? I'm trying to get, is it, is it any businesses period in terms of number, or is it more the, the concern that it's going to become, you know, thirty new businesses along Route sixteen?
What's the point, though? How, how could we, what would you do differently along versus ten?
Um, I think, I think there's certainly more potential for, one, at least someone to try it, whether it was, you know, whether it was, it made sense or not, but I see a lot less potential for, you know, ongoing development.
Well, in the end, all we're talking about here is whether or not the planning board is gonna recommend this or not recommend it. What more do we need to?
As I said, I'm on the fence. I'm still waiting for some compelling argument to push me in one direction or the other.
I can't, I have to make another comment. Since the majority of the neighbors here, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna extend that, I'm gonna say since the majority of the existing residents north of Eagle Mountain Road on Route sixteen apparently want this change in the here and now, not thinking about the future, why not accommodate them? And then in the future, maybe ten years from now, there will be a majority in the neighborhood that would prefer it to go back to commercial, and then they can change it.
Yeah.
It's another petition article, it's gotta go on a warrant.
Correct.
So it's gonna be voted at town meeting.
Again, the only decision here tonight is whether this board recommends that the town approve it or recommends the town object.
I think that's an important distinction up front, because I guess that most voters that look at that, the planning board says, yes, they check up, yes.
Obviously, we have some modest influence, though, I mean, the overreaching there.
But, but which is why we're deliberating on this, and it's why at least I keep pushing to, you know, to see what the real issues are, you know, because I, I guess I wanna vote in, whatever influence I have, I still wanna vote in, in, in a way that I'm gonna feel like I made the right decision in that vote afterwards.
Well, I think, I think of any of the, I'm sorry, did, sir?
No, you finished him.
And, and I just think if we all knew what was gonna happen in the future, we probably wouldn't be sitting here now.
No.
So I think it's, it's, it's the concern about the things that might happen that people don't like, you know, one, one business.
One, one conversation, please.
When business gets established, either does well, doesn't do well, another one, and next thing you know, it's, it's a downhill slide. So I think this is what prevents that from happening, and as Jeff said, if, if the town in the next time it looks at the master plan wants to change it, so be it.
Dick. The master plan doesn't change anything, it's just suggestions. If we're thinking down the road, what happens when the town is looking for revenue down the road that doesn't impact? I mean, every single family house has the potential of requiring school and school buses and all that, so what happens? We're getting filled up, we've built out, we've done everything residential, we're looking for commercial income, something that'll come in and doesn't require all the services that residential communities require. So we're looking to, you know, find a tax case other than, at one time, there was a figure from the state that said for every dollar of assessment on single-family houses, you paid a dollar ten in services in the town. So, yeah, we're looking for a nice residential community, but we're looking to support that community. So I think that cutting off an avenue to commercial is incorrect. I think that's a place that we could have a, a revenue base that isn't based on the school and all the services that are required from single-family residents.
Well, that argument.
I'm not arguing with anybody. I'm just trying to make a statement. Scott said he was looking for that little kicker that could come over, so I was trying to think of a logical sequence of events that might do that.
On that logic, the best thing we should be doing is trying to encourage the development of, you know, weekend houses, where, you know, there's no school, the back of the schools, there's minimal impact except on the kids.
Okay, but down the road, we can't say that those second houses aren't going to get filled up with families with lots of kids. We don't know that, and I'm just trying to bring you a scenario where we're at the point in Jackson, we're built out, we've got our residential taken care of, and we would like another revenue source. I think that commercial could be that revenue source.
And there's probably the time to reevaluate. George, not the present time.
I, I, first off, I think changing it back to a residential, there is a depression in land value. I think folks that have owned land there then would be compensated for, because there would be technically a taking of some of their opportunity. We talk about what might be there, we haven't talked about what our needs might be that we would want, going along with what Dick is saying, it may be we need commercial activity there, and to say we're gonna shuffle it from one to the other, that's pushing a string uphill, I think. So I would leave it like it is. The fear of bad things happening, I think, should be suppressed by the fear of not having land available for what we may need in the future. You know, we hear about how things, we don't wanna change. Well, things have changed considerably, and if we're trying to preserve things, then we wouldn't have developed what we have now. So we can't just say, I'm here to pull up the life ladder. I think we need to keep that the way it is.
I would just say, you know, there's obviously people that haven't, you know, expressed an interest in possibly making a change. If you put something like this onto a ballot vote or whatever, there's a lot of people in their own selfish interest that are gonna see this as a benefit to themselves when they really don't have a dog in the fight other than the fact that they drive past. So, you know, it would be unfairly loaded towards those that would probably favor making a change than those that would be opposed to it. Just a, a simple, basic understanding of the way most people are, the way they would, they would look at this issue. I think, you know, it's, it really comes down to, you know, to the people that live there. You know, I don't live there. I enjoy driving up the notch as much as anybody does, but I just think like Cameron said earlier, you know, in terms of people doing property there, like George was pointing out, you know, there's, there is, you know, it should be considered, you know, people should consider the fact that maybe they have, you know, they had an interest, they bought this property knowing it was commercially, well, not commercial, but.
Had that potential.
Yeah, we understand. So, so I'm just, I'm just, I'm just gonna make that point so that people can understand that there, like George said, there is a possibility, there could be some taking away of value or opportunity to, to an individual. Most of the people here seem to have expressed the opposite, that they actually like it, but, you know, there may be that personality.
So what, what is your opinion?
I don't really fear, I don't feel that it's, like I said, I don't really have a dog in the fight. I'm not, you know, I don't live there, I don't, you know, I understand both sides of the, of the, of the argument, if you wanna put it that way. But I just, I think people should carefully consider before they make changes like this. You know, it's, it's, it sounds like a mild thing, but, you know, it's, a lot of it is because of, like George is saying, what they, what they fear they might see down the road, what is really, you know, what is potentially possible, and what is likely. And, you know, like you said, you know, if a guy wants to have a guiding business, you know, it is a small business, but, you know, the guy, the person who'd have to live there, I think you said, in order to have a, would have to become the homeowner business.
Customer.
So, you know, it could be difficult. I guess that's, I don't think the end of my comment.
I just wanna say, I think you're talking about a three-mile stretch of Route sixteen from Eagle Mountain Road to the bridge beyond Data Place. And you folks, I would hope would look at the map and see how many properties would be directly affected by your decision to favor or not favor the petition article.
You guys ready to vote? Okay, we're gonna call the public hearing to a close. Thank you for your comments.
Can I just ask a que, just a question?
Sure.
Very brief. Have you got the zoning change, the one of permitting, have you got it together so we know?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't.
Aren't you putting out for permitting, whether to inspect single-family homes and everything? Have you got that article together?
Yes.
Is it out in public?
The, the, I think the, the draft that prior to the.
It's on the bulletin?
January seventeenth is posted on, on the bulletin board. There's one, if you look at the minutes, there's one small change to that, and I haven't gotten to Ella a copy with the change, but if you look, it's one fairly small change. So if you look at the minutes.
That's all I wanted to know, so I could.
Okay, great. Everybody in favor recommending?
I made the final comment, though. I was one of the people who collected signatures on this petition. I tried to approach everybody, every voter who aimed to the series. I tried to approach everybody, every voter who came to the service. I was going to reach everybody, but everybody I reached was willing to sign, and most did sign. So, but you were sought to my ear, as representative of actually the other, I think there's three or four people that live out there.
Did anybody refuse to sign it?
No, refused to sign it. Several, Rick Smith and Susan Buchanan, some did sign it, but they ran out of time.
Thank you all.
I want to hand the results. I thought that was kind of weird. It was like we watched the supermarket the other day. The lights went out. I didn't even watch the commercials, that's how bad it was.
All right. So, all in, all ready? Everybody's ready? So all in favor of recommending this petition to rezone Route 16 north of Eagle Mountain Road? Excellent. From its current zoning village district to residential. Say aye. All opposed?
Now you don't already felt last week.
Scott, John, Dick, and George are opposed, Sarah, Dave, and Fred are for.
He reaches for his hat.
I got one more thing. One more. I mean, nobody answers to it. I have one thing, if you don't mind I bring it up now?
Yeah, I have one thing too.
You want to go first? Okay, I have two things actually.
Two things now.
New business? Yes.
I have some old business, I think.
Okay, go first.
Just, right, have the, John, you voted, sorry, I didn't bring this up, yes, last call, the last meeting, I was, but you voted against, I'm sorry, you voted in favor of even, not inspecting single-family homes, not enforcing.
I am in favor of putting the amendment for the choice.
No, but I mean, the, we voted, we vote, the vote was whether or not to recommend or not recommend to the town that it be adopted. And you voted in favor of that amendment that we.
To not adopt the single-family.
Yeah, the single-family exemption. So should I, I mean, is that, it's fair to say that's the, since you're representing Scott, that's going to be the slot board?
I can't speak for the other selectmen, but I agree with that. I think that would be true statement, but I can't speak for them.
Okay.
You're up.
Okay, I have two things. From that vote, I was in the minority, so I, as I did once before, I drafted up and I'm giving a minority report as to why I support that amendment. And it, I'll provide, I'll email you all around a copy, and it basically has a few functions to it. One is the first constitutional issue that I've talked of several times before, that is a right of an individual to maintain his own home, as stated in Article 2 of our Constitution. Article 3 addresses the contingency that you give up that right if there's an issue by terms of safety, then there isn't. It may be safe to the individual, but not to the community. We also go through the, talked about that we, the state observes that by not requiring one- and two-family houses to be enforced by the state building code if there's no enforcement process in the town. They took a year after they passed it to enact it. We talk about craftsmen that are already electrical and plumbing are licensed. It's state law that everything is done by the state building code. We also talked, I made a number of inputs to the ordinance that created this code, that we provide full information on the impact of that new code, that new ordinance. The major things are addressing the requirement for permits. The discussion in the public hearing, Senator, inspections. Inspections are only a part of the process of the enforcement. It is driven by permits. We only addressed in our ordinance what is not required. We chose not to address what is required, and it's fairly extensive. So we don't have a handle on, we're not telling people what is in, what will be required to be permitted. We don't address the part about the design approval and whether or not, if you change it, will it need reapproval? Can you design build? And one of the issues that I see in it, if there's site disturbance, do we have to comply with the site disturbance, which is an unresolved issue that we talked about a year or so ago? So there's a number of things that hang out in the ordinance that we don't address, and we're basically passing it to say, we'll find out what's in it. I also addressed the issue of our zoning ordinance that talks about our cultural heritage. And as I pointed out, most towns our size do not do that, which is in the, observes that cultural heritage. So what I come up with a recommendation is that, number one, that we pass the ordinance as we proposed it. Number two, that we also pass the exception for housing. And part of the rationale of doing it that way, the state gave us a year to look at their legislation. We talk about gradually increasing our directive. If we hold off one year to see what we want to do, to see what this ordinance really does by restricting it only to multifamily and commercial, we have an opportunity then to build for next time around something that everyone understands that will make it applicable or not applicable or partially to the single-family homes. So that's, that's what's in the, my minority report that I submit to be part of the minutes. So, the last thing I have to say, my appointment for three years is completed in March, next month. I'm not going to ask for another reappointment, whether we get it or not. So this would be my last meeting. So I just want to say thank you all for listening to me. Great folks to get along, but we disagree, and that's okay. So I thank you for the opportunity and might see you tomorrow or on the ski slope or wherever. So, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Okay. And you're going to email?
Yeah, I'll email it around and get it to you, Ella.
Please.
You need a copy?
These are mine. This is a letter from Ray. It's his letter of resignation. I apologize, I've seen this for the first time myself, not because it wasn't delivered to me, but because I made an erroneous assumption.
It's hard to read all capitals.
I don't know that we need to discuss this. Just wanted to pass it around, so that we can, you know, if anything, anything here anyone wants to bring up at the next meeting.
I would certainly like to thank Ray for his service years and years and years and years of service.
He's certainly provided a lot of service.
Yes.
I would say I might not be part of the board, but sometimes you'll see me sitting over there.
Is there anything else, or did anyone want to get into this letter at all? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make up my last official act.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.